Chili locked down, my lady.
Yeah.
Do you at least put a hat on?
I didn't.
There's some black ice too, that's just hard to.
Wiggle down?
Well, the camera is actually making it with more sometimes.
Not here, at the good ones.
No, like when it's partially, when it's mostly not, um, because mostly it's clear. It's like almost all just.
All your.
She knows I don't like. Don't.
I know. Um, yak truck. Ready for business.
There's seven models.
Yes, the original, the original yak truck.
I still gotta remember I sold this.
Yeah.
No, no, I have some reviews as a runner about which ones.
I respect that, like.
Um, work.
Good look at Charlie.
Really, you already gave me Vegas?
Pretty minimal, we got lucky.
Yeah, look at Charlie.
So.
So I have an email.
You had, you had the same.
I had to have a tussle with them. So I didn't intend to.
Yeah.
Because it was too icy.
But the ice.
Right, so when I tried to stir the fire, hit a woodrow and slipped on the ice. It'd been better if I'd showed up in a bikini.
We, I'm so sorry.
Ah, I couldn't do well at least.
I found my neighbor on the street today, too.
He's just sitting there with half.
Like two o'clock afternoon.
Oh, Charlie.
That is not.
My guy showed up.
It's a look though. Uh, here's, look, I didn't see it at first. We don't.
Well, I saw. What's going on, Charlie? Cassie taking it down my side.
This is the third evening meeting.
Yes. Going outside in the ice with crocs on.
The crocs.
And you went down?
What?
You went down?
Take a look.
Look at his eye, the eye, that's eye day.
Nice. Sorry.
It just doesn't end.
No, it's like one of those special times where you say bam bam bam.
Well, hopefully the third one is in the fire one.
No, yeah.
Apparently after days, after days of women, there's no word, so. Well, I got cut yesterday myself. I have an annual cardiac cardiologist. My big vow is actually reduce the millimeter. I have a magical curse, my father, my grandfather, my uncle.
That's foul.
Yes. It's really hard.
Your mantra?
Yeah.
That's an important. I'm learning. I'm going to the cardiologist tomorrow, but he wrote me a letter to him, see if he bump whatever he do.
That's a good scene.
It's a poor situation, like you need a sign. Well, if anybody's trying to drop this meeting, nice to one.
I knew my phone.
I remember.
As you were taking it.
Yeah. I wrote my phone.
But they just. Oh, you're not gonna prove your budget?
Yeah.
We'll wait for the tone. So I asked Jeff what he wanted from me, you know, about my fire.
Pardon me, if you're bothered by my professional energy, I apologize. You just have like checkments and that.
I haven't told you about that.
I know, well, that's what I, that's what I come. But. It will be.
All right, it being six o'clock, all present in town for the select board. Call this special budget meeting to order and. Discussion is supposed budgets for the ambulance and highway and the ambulance is up first. You're up.
Excellent. Did we want to use the podium or can I just talk from here?
Sure, whatever's more comfortable.
I would rather talk from here.
That's fine.
If we're good with that.
Yeah, because you're direct on the camera, no problem.
Okay. Um, so I'll start by summary, summing up what I put into the budget before I sent it up to Jeff. I wanted to increase the call rate from three dollars an hour overnight to five dollars an hour. The cost increase on that for the year would have been seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Um, I asked to increase the wages for our BLS providers from seventeen to twenty, per our AEMTs from twenty to twenty-two and for our paramedics from twenty-two to twenty-five dollars an hour. I wanted to increase the training budget from four thousand dollars to eleven thousand dollars per year, an increase of seven thousand dollars to help support paramedic education. Um, I wanted to add a line item to purchase four pagers per year at a total cost of two thousand dollars a year. I'll add a line item for portable radios, uh, two thousand dollars per year, two radios per year. Um, and I wanted to add the mobile radios into the CEP, um, two radios every six years at ten thousand dollars apiece. Um, and then I wanted to have a conversation about a new facility because we have outgrown our current space.
Can we go by like the personnel items? Sure, just so we're on, I don't know if you have the same pages we have.
I believe I do.
So probably the best thing to do is let's go down, interview each page. So fifteen would be the first page and then, um, talk to us about where we're at and.
So what I, I looked at was, um, last year we added in on-call pay for the volunteers overnight, that's six PM to six AM for two, two providers, um, seven days a week. And we started that at three dollars an hour.
What line item are we talking?
Line item would be the one under five oh nine.
Got it.
Um.
Yep.
And I wanted to increase that line item to what would have been. Sorry, flipping back to my notes. Um, the total on that would have been seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy dollar increase.
From twenty-six to ten.
Um. Now I'm trying to find it myself. Yes, from twenty-six to ten.
Up seventeen thousand, which would have been thirty-three something, right?
Forty-three.
Forty, forty.
Ten thousand would be thirty-six, yeah, forty-three.
Yep.
Next.
And then the next was the wages increase for, um, our BLS providers, which would have been a three dollar increase from seventeen to twenty, and that you would see over a variety of line items because it, each provider is paid at their rate for the action they're performing, um, whether they're covering in special detail or they are on a call or working a daytime shift.
What's BLS?
Basic life support, it's our, um, differs EMTs and EMTs.
First-year providers, that's what you think.
Yep, and then our AEMTs would have been a two dollar an hour increase and our medics would have been a three dollar an hour increase.
And that's line item?
Uh, it's across a variety of line items, um, anywhere you see wages because it falls under run pay, uh, transfer crew, special details, train, uh.
Shift coverage.
Shift coverage, yeah.
So it would be wage per hour of the various.
Oh, yeah, it gets caught in the math.
So, so the total increase you asked for in addition to forty-three was how much?
I didn't have a way to calculate this because it's very provider-based because whether, um, Scott's working, who's a paramedic, that's a different wage than Emily, who's working, um, who's an AEMT or Danielle, who's behind me, who's one of our BLS providers. So there's no easy way to calculate that, so I didn't make an attempt at it, I was leaving it to Lori's expertise.
So you asked for that and what we have in front of us is what management has, uh, decided is the approach.
Correct.
Are there any increases included?
Yeah.
Are there?
Yeah, I just was hoping you'd elaborate.
Yeah, um, so actually, uh, just based on the budget pressures, we're much more modest, it was I think a dollar increase.
For each?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I think that, uh, the paramedic I haven't still decided on and leaning towards a dollar there as well. So.
So a dollar increase is in the budget already?
Okay.
We did, uh, I think Megan and I had talked, um, I think for, um, outside of paramedic, um, those others are fairly in line with part-timers and, and other agencies.
Um, the districts, District Six, which is where we fall into the way the states divide it up ambulances, is working on putting together a wage study right now and when I have that, I will make sure that you guys get that so we can see exactly where we fall.
We've talked about.
Yep. Yeah, we'd love to see that. Sure.
Right now, we only have waterbury numbers, if you ask, we do fall under those.
Yeah.
Likely, but we do fall under those. Within those, again? No, fall under those. Okay, yeah, sorry. But we haven't given everything because we're waiting for other services to get back so you can have a complete picture.
The next thing would have been the, um, the education, which is, um.
Increased by seven thousand.
Right, I'm looking for the line item and reading these is next page. Never missed, oh yeah, seven twenty-five on page sixteen.
School and training?
School and training, yeah. Right now, we're sitting at six thousand, um, and I would like that, or I guess that's proposed for this year. It came up two thousand dollars, we were at four thousand. I feel very strongly that we need to start supporting our own education. We can, we cannot rely on other agencies to train people and have them want to come work here. Um, other agencies pay to send their people to school or at least partially pay and support them. Um, and if we want people to be invested in this department and want to stick around, then we need to invest in them. Um, you guys are doing that with me, I am starting school in January. But Blair's right here is also starting school with me in January on their own time. So we can't rely on people to, one, be able to afford to do that. Eleven thousand dollars is a lot of money to ask somebody to invest in their own education, um, for a part-time job. And secondly, um, if we want to continue to have paramedics, we need to raise them ourselves. That is the best way so they're familiar with us and our community, um, and it's, it's important.
Yeah, so along those lines, again, you know, and I did agree to allow Megan to start that course and then Megan did talk about others and I, you know, from a realistic perspective and what this municipality can afford, you know, eleven thousand is quite a bit, so, um, I felt that the number should be increased, but not to that level again because we are, you know, starting to, to do some more work, so again, it's just about budget numbers, but, so we've made some strides. May I caution, if I'm okay chief, that training is all training, it isn't just paramedic. So that's brand-new member who comes in who needs EMT training, we're asking for them to pay their own and the upcoming course in January is six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And advanced DMT who, um, is going to that next level and becoming that middle level between paramedic, that's a two thousand dollar course. You can see how quickly a budget could be expended, um, between one paramedic or a couple EMTs. Uh, so for sustaining our education and our, uh, level of service, um, for people to continue to grow, I'm not sure that number, and I, I reflect and understand how much budgetary pressure that puts on the town, but I believe it's also, I need to be said here that training EMTs is a costly part of our, doing our business.
And EMTs are six twenty-five an individual and what was the two thousand?
Eight EMT, advanced.
Advanced, yeah.
Yeah, advanced DMT, it's, it's between a paramedic and a new member.
And a lot of the people that are pursuing these are college students who are not rolling in money and not making a lot of money. So the more support we can offer, the more benefits our community, particularly if we can support them as freshmen coming in and then we get them for four years or more.
I mean, if there's like a, an arrangement where, I don't know how you work it out, that if they stay for a certain period of time.
Well, that's what we used to do with the police department.
Yeah. For folks who went to the academy.
Yeah.
So you, so I come to Norwich as a, as a freshman and, uh, for, so the, the municipality pays for my basic EMT training.
Right now, they don't.
No, they do not.
So your, but your proposal is that they do?
Um, that we could contribute to it. I don't, I am hesitant to fully support somebody who's just walks onto the department. Somebody, I'll use myself as an example, I, when I went to pursue my A, I had been with the department for more than five years and LT at that time helped me through his training budget pay for that course because I had been around and he knew I wasn't going anywhere. I think it's important to see a level of commitment from people before we put the bill for their course. But I would love to set up a program where there's, like you guys used to do with the police department, where there is a commitment to the department following us, paying for or part of their course.
The chief normally uses her training budget for those that have been on the department for at least a year, not for somebody who's new. With the expectation, and most of our Norwich students are paying on their own, getting on the department, shooting themselves and then if we have an advanced DMT course coming up, if we could contribute, we can, but with budget constraints there, most of them are paying out of pocket again.
Right, so I, again, I'm a freshman in Norwich, I'm gonna be there for four years. I'm not constrained by being a cadet, so I'm, I'm a freshman. Uh, I then, in, or your idea is that I spend a year at the department and then based on my performance and interest, then I would get some type of tuition assistance to get my basic EMT.
That would be my hope.
So the, it's six twenty-five to get the basic EMT, I'm now a sophomore in college and what's the cost share gonna be?
I don't know, because this course, the six twenty-five that Scott is talking about right now is a reduced cost to that course. That is fifty percent, is that correct? That course is normally twelve fifty.
How does it get reduced?
Through grants through the state.
I got a grant to Vermont, uh, well, and right now, we have thirteen local students, but local responders for us that are getting a half price course because of that grant that we obtained.
Cool.
But that's not a promise every year, so the number we're really looking at is twelve fifty.
For an EMT course.
For an EMT course.
And how many, so how many students, how many seniors graduate and you need to make that up on average?
We, three or four usually.
Okay.
And that's usually what we retain out of a class as well. We usually get three or four that are commit to the department and follow through on that commitment.
And if it's four, I mean, that's five thousand dollars and you can see how, looking at your line item here, that just for the basic level training that could be.
Beats it right up.
Yep.
And that's, I think that's my.
And that doesn't account for anything, any specialty training at a fire academy that somebody wanted to go to or anybody we wanted to bring in to do a specialized training in-house?
This is just licensure, this is to get their license. So I don't want to get stuck on this point, but I, I just want to express that.
It's expensive.
It is expensive.
Um, so then we talked about, or I asked for line items for equipment, which I don't see in here.
They were proposed.
Equipment under O and M or equipment under CIP?
Radio is plenty, but O and M one could sense.
The mobiles went to, but I asked about pagers and portables as well.
They're in the capital.
Oh, radio repair.
What page?
Because all the fire.
Sixteen still.
Are also in the cap.
Not the very bottom. So equipment purchases at the bottom of page sixteen?
Oh, yeah, under eight forty-six. So that was, it went up by a thousand dollars.
And I, I forget, we, we talked, uh, specific items?
Yep, I was looking for four pagers and two portable radios.
Pagers and radios are on page fifty-five in the capital equipment budget. Because that's what we do with all, with the highway and the fire department.
So let's address what, what's included in eight forty-six?
Eight forty-six would be, um, I'm not sure, especially.
General, general equipment purchase.
Yep, so if we were looking.
Which is, generalized equipment purchase.
All right, so that's not what you're referring.
Operational.
Consumables?
But to give you a brief stat.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
When'd she say forty-five?
Fifty-five.
We're in the CIP for page fifty-five.
Are radios and vehicles?
Yep, so there's three line items there, one for radios and vehicles, one for radios that we wear on our hips and the pagers that we wear on our hips as well.
So we, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we did not fund pagers.
Correct.
This budget shows that we're funding pagers at two thousand dollars.
Yep.
And it looks like the projection is to continue that.
Yes, that allows us to purchase, it'll be about four pagers a year, um, with the idea that we need to, in the past, we purchased, both purchased pagers and radios with grants, AFG grants and whatnot, and those just have not come around recently and so they wear out, our supplies are dwindling and we need to start thinking about how we're gonna maintain our supply long-term, so buying a few a year is the best way.
So four per year and how many in the fleet?
In the fleet currently, probably ten or less. I don't see them every day because they're issued to people.
What's the cost per, per pager?
Pagers about five hundred dollars apiece, um, and we can program them in-house, so there's no associated cost to that.
But there's a monthly fee to have a pager?
No.
No, you buy the pager and that's it?
That is correct.
You're ready to go in a lifetime for the pagers?
Lifetime on them is, the one that's on my hip currently, I've had for probably five years and it's in good shape. I mean, granted accidents happen, they, people fall.
That's all the information we need in the budget line item.
Yeah.
So we can make prudent decisions.
About life, life expectancy?
Lifespan and how many you're gonna replace per year.
Yeah.
And if you look, look, the other line items are like that.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks to me like you've got four pagers in this budget.
That is correct.
All right, that's what you want.
Yep.
Good.
Um.
Portable radios.
Yep, portables are also in there, two per year, so that's, that'll work because they're about nine hundred dollars apiece.
Two per year, nine hundred each.
Yep.
Lifespan?
About ten years.
Got it, yeah.
That's in there.
Yeah.
And then the mobiles in the vehicles are ten thousand dollars each. They were just replaced in twenty-two and they were about a six to seven year lifespan.
I'm sorry, Megan, I've been hearing, how many, um, portables do you have around?
Around?
Portables, yeah.
Um, again, probably about ten. We've got three that live at the station that we use as sign-out radios, but those don't get issued out. All of the officers have them, nope, almost all of the officers have them and then there's a few others that are floating.
Share.
Yes.
So by having, having this line item saying mobiles and vehicles, they're not all in a vehicle?
No, the mobiles are the ones that are mounted in the vehicles that we use to contact dispatch when we're in and out to calls. The portables are the ones, I should have brought mine, Scott has his.
All right, there's, no, there's a portable, all right.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, the language is confusing.
So is the budget, I guess.
Okay, fair.
So when are we up for new ones in vehicles?
Um.
Six years?
Uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight is in the budget, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
And right now, we have zero in the balance.
But we're putting in six thousand.
Six, seven hundred, yeah.
Yeah, if you, last year, um, radios used to be just one line, said radios, and last year the board asked that I switch vehicle radios from portable radios, so there's like seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars left, I just let it stay. I had to pick portable or vehicles, I just let it, let it stay with portable.
Gotcha.
We spent a lot of time on radios last year, the fire department started it.
So please.
Yeah. And then the last thing that I had put in my list of asks was the new facility conversation.
Which we apparently have, we have four dollars and one cent.
Yes.
All right, build it on that budget, okay?
All right, I'll have to buy a pack of two, that should do the trick.
No, that wouldn't even buy a tent, wouldn't even buy a steak to the tent.
No, look at steaks.
Yeah, I mean, based on previous discussions, I didn't feel that I should put ones in yet without a discussion, but.
That's a bonding thing.
Right.
And the only place I see, which has been discussed since the turn of the century, was combining the police, I'm sorry, the, making that whole facility an emergency facility. Ambulance, fire and police. Where?
Right where it's.
The fire department, it's only real.
In the fire department.
It could be a combination of both, that's, no, that, I just wanted clarification, not the current location.
No, I don't think we would invest in the current location.
Yeah, I would certainly.
Flooded issues.
Yeah, I would certainly.
Or anywhere near it.
No, because I've heard, so I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, my vision would be to put it on Wall Street. I think.
I just keep hoping that some flood resiliency program is gonna decide that we have tons of money to give us to move our facility.
I don't think that's a.
It's not crazy, but.
That one's gonna be a tough one.
Yep, I, I understand, I just.
We want to do everything we can to make sure that the one you're in right now is. App, it's not the best by any stretch, but I think. But to Lydia's point of flood resiliency, do you guys look at those grants?
I haven't.
Yeah, Tom and I.
What are you, what are you doing about that?
We should.
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of programs, mostly at the federal level, um, and those are very competitive and very difficult, um, and those funds are drawing up, but, uh, at the state level, not as much.
These guys have a facility that when we have a high water event, they have to move their gear.
No, no, we understand, we, people are right out there.
So that's, that's the, the approach you take to get a facility partially or completely funded is you've got an issue that's been documented since two thousand, I think, is how you mean, or eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Yeah, one option we are looking at for facilities is state hazard mitigation grants. Typically, those don't have those kind of dollar amounts, but.
Could they help us get further with planning?
What's that?
Could they help us get further with planning? Because I know there was a plan that, however, many years ago, but that's not gonna, you know, we'd need to update it if we were.
Yeah, I still have those plans, we, I actually pulled them out to look at them the other day because it had been quite some time, um.
I still need a copy of those.
I'll get you. To fire that year.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, yeah, the safety community should have that. I would point out that I heard when we did the fire, uh, department two days ago, he was talking about having to have a bigger thing in there and, and I'm wondering if there's gonna be enough room.
There won't be enough room with the apparatus, it's, it's a fire department, even if he gets rid of the tanker trucks, tower trucks.
That's what he's saying.
Taking it over, which means you have to have a new, you have to have an addition, additional facility, which you can only go north or west with, uh, but tied on to that. And what I think is, if memory serves, going out west for the ambulance department with a connection that goes into the fire department for, uh, administrators on the second floor, which they're gonna sprinkle, I think, is the goal, I think. I think when we discussed adding on to the fire department, that was a big hesitation from the fire department's perspective, that it pretty much encroaches their expansion capabilities for their equipment. Because of the footprint, right, that would be occupied with the new proposed addition.
Yep, because everything that I've seen that's been proposed is to, I'm terrible with directions, the west side
Yeah.
of the station, um, which does, and it would take up all of that green space that's there now.
So that, the footprint would be maximized to, if we did add on the, combined the ambulance and the fire.
Yeah, as I, yeah, as I recall, they're, we're kinda looking at two Sarahs, one is a separate standalone building, or combine the two, and I think the preference was to combine, um, or add-on.
The, the, commercial construction is still three thousand dollars a square foot, so whether it's standalone or it's add-on, it's gonna be the same ticket, gonna be the same price.
I do wanna highlight, if I may, flooding is an important thing, and I don't wanna dismiss that, but we certainly have outgrown operationally, even if we weren't in a floodplain, uh, we don't have the space in our building. Everybody's seen our third rig that is right now under snow, because it sat outside for that whole time. Uh, last night, we had a, a meeting of our members, and I'm happy to say we had near thirty to forty people, but we had people sitting on floors and cramming themselves, because we just don't have the space. We have a bunk bed for a single room for people to sleep, if two responders need to sleep there at night because of weather, they can't, we can't have two same, or different genders, we just don't have the space. Uh, I, we have out, operationally outgrown our space that we've used for decades.
And we've noticed that for decades.
Yeah.
And we've done nothing about it.
I'm focusing on the flood resiliency because I have hopes of it being a pathway of funding.
Sure, absolutely.
Understood.
But not to ignore, not with an intention to ignore, the, the operational.
We'll take any money that comes from anywhere.
I'm just trying to, like, I think the, the main obstacle that we're all, we're just going money, money, money.
Yeah.
How do we do this?
And we, and we met with the school board the other night, and they presented possibilities of a major bond issue coming up for that. So we all have to be cognizant of those threats, there's always so much. But, um, so I know I've had this discussion before, and, um, so SERV currently occupies, would you say the same amount of space directly behind your space now?
Um, including the vault or without the vault?
Including the vault.
It's, I think it may be slightly less than we currently occupy, um, but yeah, it's probably similar.
So it would, it would possibly double. I know it sounded addressing flooding, but.
No, but, I mean, e- even if we were gonna build a new building, it would still take a long time if we were like ready.
Right, no, I'm saying.
So yeah, that, I think you're onto a.
Well, we talked about it.
Yeah.
I mean, the other.
LT, I don't know if you were in charge, or LT was in charge when we talked about, when we did those, running major renovations a few years ago.
Yeah, it was LT, yeah.
I really wanted to expand back there.
Yeah, um.
SERV would be displaced.
We'd have to find a place for SERV.
And SERV's space would work well to expand daytime operations and provide more space, working space, but it doesn't solve like a sleeping issue because lack of egress. You gotta have two routes of egress.
Okay.
And like, so you can't, I can't turn the vault into a bunk room because there's no windows.
Yep.
So that, it still presents the same issue.
How much money would we wanna put into major?
Right, yeah, how much, how much money are you putting into, I'm thinking.
Yeah, that would be a quick fix for your operational situation.
Correct, it would expand our meeting room space, expand our.
Because I thought it would alleviate the bunk issue, but maybe a reconfiguration you could do.
It might, yeah, I mean, if we moved my office, we could turn that into, you know, there are lots of things we can play with there, but.
Yeah, but we still have to.
We could put you in the vault.
And we could close the door and leave you there. Nobody could find me.
You would be like a vampire.
Yeah, a little bit.
There's nothing more permanent than temporary.
No.
Yeah.
The, the thing about the attractiveness of putting these items together is what we would get, gain in efficiencies with energy, and heat, and water, and and also computer infrastructure, and.
And it's probably small potatoes, but when we have an event where we have to evacuate, it delays our response to be able to help the town, because we've gotta take care of our stuff first.
Correct, correct.
Um, so having us in a place that is, we don't have to evacuate from before being able to respond to the disaster that's in front of us, is huge.
Right. And I, and those disasters are only going to happen more frequently.
Correct, yes.
Witness, uh, we didn't have our first mud season yet, did we?
I don't think so.
We were fortunate, it didn't break up. It was a slushy fate.
Yeah. And we went out barefoot this morning, and it wasn't too bad.
Thanks to the guys.
Yes.
Next to us.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Don't wanna miss shouting out for it.
If the roads don't hold up, he gets a shit sandwich, but when the roads are doing their time, nobody says no.
Oh, well, that's the way it goes.
I know. He knows it. But they're, they're looking pretty good now.
Um, I guess the last thing I would like to highlight is that our numbers are up significantly. We are five incidences away from reaching a thousand incidences in a calendar year for the first time ever. So I suspect that we will be called by dispatch more than five times in the rest of the month, um.
Hopefully not tonight.
Hopefully not tonight, correct, um, but our, our numbers overall compared to last year are up, we're up over a hundred calls from this time last year, um.
And it's only gonna get more, so because we were talking about demographic factors.
Yep, demographic factors, um.
I mean, that reflects an eight, ten to twelve percent annual increase in our call line, which is more work, more, more times trucks on the road, and that's emergency call volume.
Yep.
Can I, since you're talking about volume and, and the frequency, can I talk to you about something that was a big deal last year?
Sure.
And that was, uh, transport.
Yes.
Can we talk about that? What happened?
Sure, so right now, we are staffing a second truck from one PM to six PM on Mondays and Fridays. With, we are staffing it with great success. We are seeing its usage with moderate success. Running the numbers, rough numbers, of course, um, I think we promised last year that it would be at worst revenue neutral, and that's, that's holding true. We aren't necessarily seeing a huge increase in transfers on those days, but we're seeing an increase in transfers overall. Um, and even some at more distance, which is harder on the trucks, but also better on billing. So it's a, it's give and take, um, which may lead to a conversation in the future about how long we, we keep trucks and that sort of stuff. So that was, um, I think it's a success, we're gonna continue to do it. Right now, we have a fairly easy time staffing, transfers that come in, um, not during those paid times, because we have students that want to make money, um, and eager, young eager providers who are excited to go, which is great. Um, some of us more.
Seasoned.
I was gonna say grizzled veterans, um.
They're called fossils.
Oh, is that what they're called? Are, um, you know, it's not as new and shiny for us, so the desire to get out of bed at three AM to bring Nana back to the nursing home is a little less exciting, but it still gets done.
So, um, what do you, can you speculate? You know, the, the Green Mountain Care Board's decisions about closing and so forth, is that gonna impact you guys now?
I don't suspect so, um, because we're still gonna have to take people to the hospital, and people are still gonna have to come back to nursing homes, and more so, the hospital, because the biggest impact locally is the closing of the, um, inpatient psych facility at C D M C.
Yes.
Which is closing the thirty-first of January. Um, and so they are gonna have to ship out all of their psych patients, which means more transports out of the hospital. So.
And you, we're equipped for that.
We are equipped to do that.
People who are in crisis.
Yep.
Oh, well, more power to you.
Very, I know you're about to argue in this crisis.
Yeah, I know.
And yeah, it is. We see pretty much everybody on their worst day.
Everybody's in crisis, isn't it?
Yep.
True, yeah.
I'm a numbers person, and I think I can also answer this by looking at the budget. Um, if I may share just some numbers.
Yes.
In twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we had revenues, um, so our ambulance fees that we collected was a hundred and nine thousand dollars over projection. Our expenses for that time, same time period, was only fifty thousand over projected, so we actually brought in more revenue and spent less, so there was actually net positive. Um, looking at year-to-date, so this is as of twelve-four, our revenues are at fifty-five point three percent of projection, so we're already over the fifty percent mark, and I can project that we'll probably be net positive, both because of emergency run volume, but I also think, uh, interfacility transport plays a part in that. So I think it's been a positive for the community and positive for the town of Orkville.
Well, you do reflect very nicely on the community, I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Those numbers you can't argue with.
Of the items that you brought up that are different from what's in here currently, is there a top priority?
Um.
Rank them, sorry, that's hard, I'm sure.
I, for me, it's wages, because we are not meeting the road with other departments. And I, I don't have the evidence to back that up right now, all I have is anecdotal in conversations. Um, and like, I will share those numbers as soon as I have them, um, but if we want people to stay with us, we have half a dozen providers that are still with us, but are also with other departments because of wages.
Yeah, just can, they can get paid better.
They can get paid better, and.
That's everywhere today.
It, it is, and, and cost of living is up, and it's expensive to exist in this world right now. So.
So can you revisit that for me, that's, that line you were saying, so what was your proposal for wage increases?
My proposal was a three-dollar increase for our BLS providers from seventeen dollars to twenty.
Yeah.
A two-dollar increase for our ALS providers from twenty to twenty-two.
Got it.
And a three-dollar increase, increase for our paramedics from twenty-two to twenty-five.
I, I wasn't fast enough with my pen.
And currently, in the budget, there's a, a dollar increase for each of those.
Yeah, that I got.
With the exception of that.
I missed the.
With the exception of that.
With the exception of that, right now, the E M T goes up by one dollar, the A E M T goes up by one dollar.
Right, Jeff said he hadn't decided.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So we're waiting to find out what you get from the rest of the departments?
I am hoping to have that information, um, soon.
Yeah, we'd like to see that.
Yeah, I, I will send it along as soon as I have it, I'm unfortunately out of the office to beginning of next week for a medical procedure, but I, as soon as I have that, I will.
Yeah, sure.
With the goal of like, soon, in seven days.
Yes.
So that's breaking out by the line item.
They can't, they can't. I, I, I can't, because the way, the way it works right now, I am on the truck Monday through Friday, eight hours a day. I have a complement of people who work opposite me each one of those days, and each one of those providers gets paid at their level. If Danielle works Monday, she right now makes seventeen dollars an hour. Valeris can work Tuesday, he makes twenty dollars an hour. Scott works Thursdays, he makes twenty, or twenty-two dollars an hour. So I can't calculate, um, what the increase is gonna look like, because it depends on who is working what shift.
You probably said that earlier, and you just.
Lori could make a guess for us of what it was.
Four hundred and eighty-four thousand. The projection I did for the first round of the budget.
Speak up just a little louder.
The, the projection I did for the first round of the budget was four hundred and eighty-four thousand per personnel cost.
So this is instead of the line that says four fifteen right now, or?
Correct.
Okay. Say it again, sorry, four eighty-four, one four, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty. Okay.
But again.
For one line item?
So it's.
You know, it all depends on who's working when.
It's, um, the subtotal under personnel.
Charlie, if I may explain it.
Right, so it's four fifteen, eight seventy now, and it was gonna be?
It would be.
Four.
Four eighty-four.
Thank you.
Can we meet in the middle somewhere? That's, I mean.
Well, that's for, for the discussion, where we have all, all the input together, and how it's gonna impact taxes.
Well, that's.
Did you get how they did that?
I did.
The total budget, everything.
Yeah.
Then we can agree.
Yeah.
I know this is something we're working year after year, and I hope, I know this seems like a big jump, but I anecdotally will also say, if I look at the sign that's in front of McDonald's or Burger King, they're offering twenty bucks.
Yeah.
We have a first responder who's given years and years and making less.
You don't have to argue, I live it every single day of my life, it's my job.
You know, I mean, we've been making the transition from a more volunteer-based to a more professional, and this is what is happening everywhere.
Yes.
And it's, uh.
And the reality is, competitive wages are a key.
Yes, very much so, and we have a half dozen responders who are the product, I'm not, you know, part of the model.
So thank you for that understanding. And I do think that wage study would be fantastic, and it's a week, that's fantastic for our timeline.
Yeah, I emailed the person putting it together earlier today to see if I could get even just a little bit of data to bring up tonight, and he didn't get back to me.
You, you've established very good, very good arguments already that we'll hopefully love right now.
I will, I'll make sure that Jeff has that in his hands as soon as I have it.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Eighty-five thousand difference. So wages, I would agree, and training is number two in my book.
Yeah, I, I agree, so wages and training are the two most important things.
In the past on the training item, it looks like you all, I need to find it again, haven't used what was in there.
That's what I was gonna bring up.
Yeah, um, and that's.
Great minds.
I. That line doesn't get married.
It's four, it's seven twenty-five.
On what page?
On page sixteen, school and training, and it's like, actual is less than two grand.
Yeah.
If I can explain that actually.
Yeah, explain that.
Sure, and after COVID, there was a flood of opportunity and funding, and many of the courses for the past few years have been provided for free. For example, last year's E M T class had fifty-two people who all got the course for free.
I remember that.
Okay.
What's the, who is the originator, or where does, do the grants for training come from? Do you know, is it USDA, is it the state of Vermont, is it a pass-through from the federal government?
We're actually, the grant I spoke about before was a pass-through, uh, through Vermont Rural EMS, which is based out of the U B M, University, um, and they got a larger, I believe it was a million, two million, three-dollar grant that they're distributing. Most of the time, these education grants are, were a third or fourth hand distributed. Uh, sometimes through the state of Vermont, through Vermont EMS, sometimes Vermont Rural EMS through federal grants, so.
So it is federal sometime?
Yeah.
Well, all money comes from the feds eventually.
There's not, that's, there's also philanthropic organizations.
Sometimes.
That fund, and especially this type of thing, but he just said federal, which is
Yep.
a big concern for me.
There's government-wise doing things.
If you read the newspaper, you'll see that grants are gonna go away.
Yes. And we're seeing the by-product of that for the communication equipment, it just.
Yeah, we just don't have that opportunity anymore.
No, so now we have to put in our budget.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone.
This has been one of your better presentations. So, this isn't the end, this is just the starting of the budget process. We hear from everybody.
Yep.
Yep.
Then we make the tough choices, yes on this, no on this, so this is just the beginning.
We'd be glad to come back.
And I'm very happy we got detailed information.
Great.
And maybe we should get that marinating ahead of time next time.
Oh, we haven't talked about vehicles.
So we've sort of circumvented what we know, our normal
Yeah.
uh, pattern has been, but we heard from you, so that's good.
Yeah.
So maybe we can go to vehicles, Carl was about to get grilled over the. Carl was about to get grilled over the road on his vehicles. We can go to fifty-five on ambulants?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a ton to talk about. I think we all know what's happening mostly, but do you have any updates on being able to get the?
The two thousand six.
Out there?
So right now, I, Patrick Martin is gonna be putting a new starter in ambulance three, the two thousand six. So it will run, we hope. And once we get that going, I am just waiting to hear from Osage when they want or can't take it out there and how we're gonna get it out there. Whether we drive it out and fly back, whether we, they drive it out, which would be my preference. I don't have a lot of interest in driving out to the Midwest.
Excuse me.
I have nothing against the Midwest. I don't have interest in doing a two-day drive.
I don't blame you, it's very flat.
Especially in the truck that hasn't moved for months.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
You're gonna have to cross the Mississippi and.
Yeah. So waiting to hear on that.
I saw an ambulance being towed on a flatbed the other day.
I, it wasn't one of ours.
No, it was a long-distance one.
Yeah, they, like every other vehicle, they are capable of falling apart.
I saw you two this morning where there was three ambulances on a flatbed and one fell off.
I saw that the other day too. So ambulance two, the twenty-twenty-two. Is gonna be going to McGee in January. It's playing a funny little trick right now. We think there's a little bit of a short in the wiring harness because it keeps trying to unlock itself even though it's already unlocked. And off. Uh, yeah. If you push the lock down, it just pops back up. So Patrick looked at that today and said, we need to get it into McGee. So the beginning of January, it's gonna go in there for the day and they will try to figure that situation out. Ambulance one, the twenty-seventeen, this past Friday was out of service for about twenty-four hours. Because we had a AC compressor seize up on us and it started smoking and burnt up a belt. But we were able to get the parts and Patrick was able to put them in on a Saturday for us. And we got that back on the road in about twenty-four hours. Both trucks outside of that have their little niki dingy things, but are doing okay and are on the road currently. Not actually on the road, but operationally on the road.
I think we've seen more gremlins with the seventeen.
We have.
This past year and I'm projecting more gremlins will be in the near future.
Let's get rid of that one.
I know, I'm ready for it to go, but we still have some time.
And I think of Sage is projecting now mid to late twenty-twenty-six.
On that one. Yep.
So we are crossing our fingers toes and everything else we can cross to see if we can get the seventeen sustained to twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Yep.
Without spending, how much was it on maintenance?
Last year it was a lot because we put an engine in.
Yeah.
You would have to remember that.
It stood out.
Yeah, it was, that project with the turbo and engine was in the neighborhood of forty thousand, I feel like, a lot over.
Yeah, I mean, I think there were other smaller things that added on.
Leading up other parallel issues.
Lot of money.
Yeah.
Yep.
And just outside of warranty.
It was.
So what about lead times? Has it changed significantly in the last year?
Osage, if we were to order a brand-new truck from Osage today, it would be four years before we could get one.
So how does that affect our, our budget planning process?
I, I think it should because, you know, the twenty-twenty-two would be slated for replacement because that's already been remounted. In what, twenty-thirty-one?
Yeah, we have thirty-two, thirty-three.
Thirty-two, thirty-three right now.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's a truck that we need to talk about ordering twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
As it stands today.
As it stands today. Now, can supply change, you know, the delays in the supply chain, can that change? And I, and I want to start looking at different manufacturers. Osage is great, they make a great box that is really great if we were to crash or roll over because they're, they're all steel and they really protect. But there are other companies out there that do similar things and are their timelines better? I don't know, I haven't gotten that far. But I think we need to explore those options.
Well, more importantly than ever, we need to make sure that we're on the right course of funding there. And.
I think this is also the by-product of more calls, is more wear and tear.
Yeah.
Is a shorter length of time.
What else would you like to talk about?
I don't, sorry.
See, as far as capital equipment is concerned, is there any other than obviously the major expenses are ambulances, but everything else is pretty good.
Laurie and I looked at constructors are slated to be replaced, is it next year? I forget.
No, I believe next, I think we would have walked.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but I got a recent quote from them, then, or they are, the cost on them is much increased. Um, and I included that. You, it's, Laurie updated that.
We're putting it in at thirty-one-five.
Okay.
Last year it was like twenty, yeah.
All right, so that's updated.
Yeah.
I think our window opens for defibrillators. And I say window, it's a multi-year window, but I think it starts in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, actually.
Is that twenty-four, twenty-five on there?
It's open now.
It's now, yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, so I'm gonna reach out to Zoll because the ones we have now, our, our refurbs that they had, which have served us very well and I would love to go that route again, but the caveat to that is they have to have them available. So I need to see if they have them available, if not, we'll go new and replace what we have.
But you don't have an estimated cost on that.
I.
Mom there just replaced two of theirs and they were forty-eight thousand dollars each.
But did they go with the?
Zoll advanced.
They advanced.
New.
New. Well, Zoll advanced new was forty-eight thousand.
So I, it is in the budget, forty-seven-five.
Forty-seven-five, yeah.
We're close.
Oh, they have thirty-eight.
Yeah, we're about nine thousand, so we're, we're close.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm hoping to go refurb if they have them because it's, they've served us well. And I'm happy with them and I think that that's an okay place to go. But we just have to see if they have them available.
Yep.
Do you get on some kind of list?
Uh, it's basically you call and it, because they'll know what they have out for orders and who's turning what in. And so if they say, oh yeah, we've got this service that's upgrading theirs and we'll have five refurbs in and we've only allotted two of them, all right, well, great, put us down for the other two type situation.
Okay, so you can say, put us down, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I will.
And we're close enough on both of them, but they can do it at any time.
Yeah, so I will, I will connect with them and see where we're at.
Fortunately, the turnaround wouldn't be like an ambulance, it would probably be months.
Yeah, just a, just a couple of months.
Don't say words to me. I might eat one of those after the.
Well, the ones we have work well, we've used them a lot recently.
You good with capital?
Yeah.
Equipment? Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good presentation, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Don't worry, he's got his flag jacked on.
Is that Oklahoma where Osage is?
Uh, they're not Oklahoma, they are, I want to say Missouri. Okay, I, my number serving for the.
Yeah, Osage is in Missouri?
Yes. That's Mary.
Mary and I might drive it out. She wanted to take me to some fish restaurant, it made us sound nice, maybe we'll stop there on the way.
Oh, and, and you know, if you want some really good smoked fish, you need to go up to Duluth.
Been there, done that, no, I'm not going back.
You don't like smoked fish?
No, I didn't, Duluth, I was there in the winter time.
You don't like Duluth? Oh, to tell you the truth, I like Duluth.
Everything's inside though.
Yes.
So page seventeen.
You know, Saint J reminds me of the little star.
Oh, I wouldn't go there. All right, so manager says we're starting on page seventeen.
Okay, so we'll start, we'll go through the whole thing, personnel. As we like to say, it is what it is, not a lot of flexibility there. We know the wages are built for contract, health insurance, as you can see, there's quite an increase there.
The health insurance lines.
Yep. Moving down to contract services, tree removal. We've seen with these storms, fair amount of tree removal, the guys can, or the employees can do a lot of that work. But from time to time, there's a larger one that needs outside service, so trying to keep it in that five thousand dollar range.
Generally stuff around power lines and stuff like that that we need cranes or something like that.
Contracted sweeping. Let's see.
Norwich does contracting, contract sweeping also, don't they, on their campus?
Yeah, they have, Les.
Your voice does that for them.
Not anymore. You know who it is now? It's Hutchins.
Oh, that's right, you are.
Yep.
And that's actually the same, that's the same one we're using.
That's good. Just coordinate the schedules.
And unfortunately, yeah.
Because mobilization costs money if they're here.
And they're a high wear item, those, those, those sweepers, they tend to be down a lot.
Okay.
We remember, we used to have one and we had the same issues.
Yeah, so didn't Hutchins purchase the independent company?
Yep, and now he is actually working with Hutchins and still running that department.
And then there was a little bit of transition issues with employees.
Yes.
Yep.
He lost every single one, he lost every single employee last year during the transition, so that's why we were so far behind.
All right.
On getting it done, so once he had rehired some new people and they came in here, of course, they'd never done the town of Norfield before, so had to get them familiarized with the roads and it was definitely a learning curve there.
All right, well, that, that's good news, huh?
Yeah, so hopefully they'll be a little more efficient next time around.
Contracted line marking.
So you know.
And similar, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah.
So you know, uh, the best line marking that happened last year was, I should say, the cleanest line marking that we had last year was done at Tops parking lot. They did a good job. It was the landlord who paid for that marking. And when I just happened to talk to the manager at Tops, that there may be an opportunity to combine the efforts if they come back. They had a hard time finding the line marker also, but to combine the efforts to come to town, just like with the street sweeping. And they would do, they did a, it was a little fuzzy on the lines that we got for line marking this year. They did not have that problem. It might be worthwhile to have that discussion, find out who they're going to employ this year and have them come to town. Carl, do you do this or does the manager do this?
I usually do this stuff, but we've always gone with this company in the past and they had done well until this year. Again, they lost every single employee, so he had to bring in, one of his crack sealer guys to come in and do it. And as you see, after I had caught them painting halfway through the day, I asked him, do you guys ever snap a chalk line or anything? Because I, I know there's some of them that got some pretty bad weevils. So yeah, like I caught him on that, I got him to start snapping chalk lines, but it was less than stellar, I will say.
Well, do you think we should engage them again or?
I would, I would like to maybe give L and D a call and see what they can do for us.
And I, I did.
They're very professional.
During the so-called debacle, I did reach out to them, but they were like, do you know how far behind we are? They have so much business, but as you say, early, we should start reaching out.
If we did it early, because that's one of my biggest concerns, was just that it didn't get done when the season starts. And that's when, you know, the most bang for our buck is if we get it done early before.
Right.
So that it's not just washed away in the winter and it's also the heightened pedestrian.
But they're gonna be, L and D is definitely gonna be more expensive. I mean, those guys are cheap for a reason.
Yeah.
Talk to Doug at Tops, just see, see what he's finding out, just a thought.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys do your own thing.
No, it's definitely worth looking into.
Well, the town of Stowe and Stowe Mount Resort uses Franks. I've said that multiple times.
Yeah, we'll definitely put them on the contact list, Franks.
Heard that a long time. Frank sounds like they might have, anyway. They're very experienced. We're a small town and lots of time you can combine efforts with other people, you know.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't know if Norwich does any line marketing at all.
Maybe.
Every year? Yeah, so instead of having a silo of highway and a silo of Norwich and a silo of Tops, combine them all.
Yep.
Take some effort, but once it works. So let's do it. My, my, my advice is start the engagement now, not in April.
Yeah, yeah, if you ask them now.
If you figure out how much Norwich is doing, how much Tops is doing, and then you do an RFP that everybody can agree to, then you've got an opportunity for somebody to come in and say, hey, three times the amount of work.
Yeah, so as you can see, we greatly, well, fairly greatly increased the cost because anticipating having to look at other, other companies.
Well, it looks like our actuals were over.
I think you get what you pay for in, in that case, as we found out.
Hundred percent.
Catch-based cleaning, as we've talked about, the utility department does have a new large machine that can do that. Crack sealing.
So can we go back to that thing?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So how did we do it in the past?
We would hire an outside firm.
Oh, got it.
Actually, before that, we used to, our old street sweeper had a building back on the back that we used to do that with as well.
All right, so we're not gonna get backcharged by the sewer department. Pretty sure.
It'll be.
That's why I'm asking.
It'll be significantly less than.
So it's significantly less than zero? Yeah, you really have, you know there's gonna be an expense.
Yeah, it'd be minimal, but.
Minimum, you ought to put something in. Thousand bucks.
I, I think we'd probably get away with three, three hundred.
I don't know, these super commissioners, they're really, they're really tough.
Probably put five hundred.
Right. You got a piece of equipment that's worth a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Right, so i- if not more, so, and you're gonna have two days worth of cleaning.
Yeah.
So I'd add five hundred minimum.
Yep. Crack sealing, that's worked out well, so we're gonna do that again.
How much, other than Smith Hill, what other areas did you seal?
Again, uh.
Union Brook.
Union Brook, sorry. Yeah, excuse me, I've been up since three o'clock this morning. I'm a little punchy.
We understand.
Yep, and they did a good job and that's the same company that did our, our painting.
Right.
That's actually their expertise. They, when they show up for that one, they actually have traffic control and they have about a seven-man crew.
Right, and that's the only thing they do, right?
Well, no, they, they do as well, they do the, Fresco does the, they actually do do crosswalks, it's just they lost their entire crosswalk crew. So they had to use the crack sealer guys to do it and of course, they were not, they were not rehearsed.
Did you care?
No, I don't think they did.
Gotcha.
Not transferable skills.
So I think we're all set at first page, if everybody's all tied up.
Charlie just volunteered.
See that one?
Oh, yeah.
Moving on to page eighteen. Admin, pretty straightforward. Not a lot of liquid.
Increase in CDL because of new equipment, I can't remember.
Actually, I'd like to elaborate on that.
Yeah.
The, the reason that that's increased like that is we, we need to, we're not getting CDL people anymore, basically. They're, they're getting hard to come by.
Yep.
And if we get young help in here that we would like to keep around, I think we need to start helping these guys out a little bit. I mean, it's an expensive process. Their Class B is, what, fifty-five, fifty-five hundred, I think? Their class B is, what, fifty-five, fifty-five hundred, I think, and a class A is seventy-five to get them.
Is it, so I know John Casella pretty well, and they have a training facility. Is that something we can take advantage of, is, where do we get our CDL certifications?
Um, I'd have to ask Pete, just, he goes, it's just a private company that provides.
Well, look into Casella, because they have a big facility down there. And I'm just saying, maybe, maybe it's less expensive. But I, I agree that we have to train our people.
Well, I mean, if you, if we get somebody that's worth keeping, you know, or you've got a guy here that has a class B and you wanna get a class A, because a class, a guy with a class B can't haul an excavator, so.
Is this enough, what's in here?
So we, we looked at it, at helping out versus the full freight.
Yep.
Yeah.
So what is the full freight?
Five thousand for the, the basic.
The class B is, yeah, I think it's just five hundred. It used to be we trained in-house. When I, when I started here fifteen years ago, you could literally just go get your permit, drive a truck, have, you know, somebody who would do it with you, learn, get good at it, go take the test. And that was the way it was, you know, sixty bucks.
Now they mandate that you have to go to certified trainers.
You, you're pointing at something.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Go away, just go away.
Chris, you're not muted, are, are you trying to? It's Chris Bradley, it said.
Chris, do you hear me?
Uh, I can, I'm sorry, I should be muted.
Okay, no problem. So my, I look into Casella's, because they have a facility in which they train for CDLs.
So they can certify, it's sounding nice.
So we've got, how many towns are in Vermont, two hundred and forty? Two hundred and fifty-one to be exact. So you've got two hundred and fifty-one, every one of them's gonna need a CDL. Where's the Vermont cities and towns and offering or something? So Carl was, was saying something that we used to do our own. So is it state mandated, we have to go outside now and do our training, okay?
Now, I have heard rumors from other road foremen that you can do an in-house, there's something, there is some kind of thing, you're saying that you can have an in-house trainer, the state, you have to have them registered with the state and all this. And, but they can only train whatever their license is. I'm not sure how much truth there is to it, but I have heard that through the grapevine.
All right, where's the state get their CDL, from the same private organizations?
I would assume so, and if something we can find out.
That's a good question, because they have a lot of.
There's two hundred and forty-one towns, there's at least two trucks for every, there's two CDL drivers for every town. I can tell you this, Google Channel Three News tonight. John just dedicated his new CDL operations down in Brooklyn. And I think you'll find that he is training most CDLs now in the state of Vermont.
Okay.
And that's why I'm saying, I think their cost, there could be cost savings.
Good. Good, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, just like at the ambulance, they need training. Our, our, our guys operating huge equipment need training, have to do it. Gotta do it. Our boys aren't available anymore.
Nope, they aren't.
So I guess we can move down to materials. Gravel stone, kept it at forty.
What line?
Eight oh six.
So Trinidad talked about doing some more crushing, is that still an option?
It is an option, but we'll have to, it takes us several, several years to be able to build up enough to do it.
Okay, I thought he was close to getting to that?
We are, we are encrusted.
Okay, I thought he had more.
No, we, we're starting to build it up again, but it'll probably take two more years.
All right, but that's the plan eventually.
It's a nice subsidy to use for, you know, when you're doing culverts or stuff like that. I mean, it's not the greatest for road resurfacing.
Right.
But as far as for, you know, a base, it's, it's pretty decent stuff.
What we need to do is pick up the gravel that's washed off into the rivers and return it to our inventory. You're not in that job.
You want me to get on that?
Are you the lobbyist of?
Excuse me. Mud season stone.
So we're leaving that.
Polyp, sir, yeah.
So we're, we're, okay, so back in twenty-three, twenty-four, that's when we actually did the crushing?
Yes.
Okay.
We crushed last.
That's why we're, we've spent almost double what we had.
And we still have some of that left.
Am I, is that correct?
I'm trying to remember back, was it?
Or is it, yeah, we had to go out and get more, and that's why we spent seventy-three thousand versus forty thousand?
I'll have to look it up. I said I'll look it up.
Yeah, no problem. That'd be good.
Turkey Hill took a lot that year.
I, I remember, yeah, there was this incident. We had, we had a July flood in twenty-three that we, I don't remember if, I think we got female money from that, but we're still. So you feel good about forty?
Yes, it's two hundred and forty, ten more roads to fill that wash in.
You're gonna get all sorts of gravel from the memory pool.
Yeah.
Yep.
Theoretically.
Yeah, but they'll say that we can't use it because of not weeding.
Yep, or contamination or whatever they may say.
Or salamanders, or.
All right, mud season stone, increase that based on what's been happening the last couple of years.
Okay.
Gas diesel, we had twenty-three, twenty-four blip there, but that one's always tough to predict. Hopefully prices will stay down or stay reasonable.
Six bucks a gallon back then. It was six dollars, five dollars plus a gallon.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Sand. Kept that same. Salt, felt like we could drop that a little bit just based on twenty-three, twenty-four and previously. Fortunately, the cost of salt has stabilized. It was probably four or five years ago, it really shot up, but we're fortunate, at least now it's stabilized. Chemicals chloride, we had, I think at one point, a fairly lengthy discussion on whether we should continue using the flake type material, go back to the liquid. It's amazing, I've read up a lot on this, and there's so many different opinions on it, but I think Carl can probably speak to that better than I.
Yeah, I can. From the research that I've done and talking to other road foremen, similar towns like Williamstown or Berlin, their chloride budgets are approximately forty thousand dollars a year.
Whoa. Why?
Dust control and also compaction.
Quality.
Quality, yeah, absolutely, and the, the problem with the flake is, and, and the flake that you mix, it's, it's ninety-three percent water. The stuff you buy is twenty, or twenty-seven percent, I think it is, water. You can tell the difference, you touch it, it's oily, so when you put it on the road, it stays there and it does what it's supposed to do. The flake, you spread it, by the time you get to the other end of the road and turn around and come back, it's already evaporated.
So we're spending our money.
We might as well take that seven thousand dollars and, and light it on fire, because that's about all we're doing.
Oh, boy.
They had, they had a bunch of fines on Smith Hill, and the, they, they graded the road, they put some new material down. They followed the greater and the new material with the chloride. And by the end of the day, the sides of the road were nothing, were covered with dust and stayed that way for the rest of the summer. It was not effective.
That's a, that's material lost.
Right, and, and then you also, to his point, when you are successful with the chloride application, you've got compaction. And the compaction makes it stiff, so the road doesn't suffer from potholes and all the rest of that. So it is.
Washboards and.
Right, it's, 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 it's a cheap way to make the back roads better. So we're gonna change the practice to that?
Like to.
To ten grand, obviously we can't get to forty grand all at once.
Yeah, I mean, what I would like to try to do is consolidate it on, into one, into one area and use it and see. That way we've got something we can say, "Hey, look, tangible evidence, look what it, look what this did."
What is the chloride you use on the paved roads, or are we not?
We're not, we're not using it, we haven't used it for.
For a while.
Yeah, probably twelve years.
Okay, because at one time we're putting liquid chloride down before an event.
Yeah, we tried, we even tried the molasses mix we used to get, we tried all sorts of things, you know, just trying to, to stretch our salt out. And we ended up finding out in the long run that it really didn't make that much difference.
Ceiling works. So Carl, the forty thousand, yeah, obviously does Berlin have more roads than we do?
Uh, actually, no.
No.
Uh, Williamstown does, they have more gravel roads than we do.
But if you drive down Chandler Road, you'll see the advantage of proper treatment on the road, it's just stiff, it's tight.
And number two, they use a different material than we do as well. They're using northeast granite, the crushed granite, we're, we're using crushed slate.
And when you use the granite, you really do have to use a lot more chloride, because that is, it quickly becomes a powder. And if you don't use the chloride, it can be a real problem and that material really turns to a dust. So that's part of what's driving their need for more chloride, based, based on that granite that can turn to powder.
Granite will not compact without it.
Yeah, it will turn to powder.
It has no, no moisture content whatsoever.
I like your approach, go small, see if it works.
We'll try it. I think if we consolidate it, maybe try, just, just use it on what, I mean, a good, I think a good test for it would be Lover's Lane.
That's it.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, you see how fast that road grates.
Oh, yes.
It can, it can go in a week, especially if you get a lot of rain. If we can, you know, grade it, lay the chloride right to it, get it compacted, in theory, it should hold up.
So is there any equipment we have to buy additionally to make the switch?
No, we have, we have.
What we need.
We have, we would have to, the only thing, usually the company that you purchase it from will supply you with a tank and a pump.
Oh, really?
A big holding tank, we already have one that we can put in the back of the truck, we just need to have them. The problem being with that, we had trouble, we tried this before and the company that we were working with required a, a minimum purchase. We had to use a certain amount per, per year, or they wouldn't supply the pump and the tank.
Got it.
So we'll have to do some research on it, find out what, you know, what we're gonna have to do and what, what they're willing to do.
Well, we have equipment right now that can handle it.
Yes, we, we can put it out, we just don't have our storage facility.
Culverts, put in eight thousand, you can see, past couple of years, we've spent more than that. But that was particularly twenty-three, twenty-four. We did get grants to cover that, so those are expenses out, but they're, they're offset with revenue. We've been very, well, most municipalities have been very fortunate. State of Vermont has been very generous in municipal road grants. Each year we've been getting anywhere from thirty-five to forty thousand for projects. So all the culverts that we put in for Hallstrom, Little Northfield, again, were funded through grants, so that's awesome. So, but we've talked about the inventory and I can't remember where you're at with current inventory.
I have eight, about eighteen culverts, in various sizes.
And are you comfortable with that number?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And then we got the culvert survey coming up.
Yep.
In the spring.
Yep, which regional planning will pay for, so we'll have to participate in that effort.
Just to go back to the, the inventory, I'll, you know, tend to order, I will order more when I do a project, because I never want to deplete that, because you never know what's gonna happen. So I always try to keep something on hand.
Are they plastic or are they metal?
Plastic, we use the gray ADS, which are the highest quality ones. We've gotten away from the black ones, the black, because they, they have a tendency of crushing.
Especially when they're exposed to sunlight.
They don't, they don't hold up like the gray pipes do, but unfortunately, gray pipes are more expensive.
Coal patch, kept the same number. We've had some much better luck in purchasing it out of state, right?
Yeah, that easy street that we've been using.
That material has worked pretty well, as we know, a lot of times the coal patch during the winter, sometimes it sticks, a lot of times it doesn't, but this material's been much better, but kept that the same. Vehicle maintenance, we really struggled with this one, it's such a tough one. I guess it's one of those things where you just try to do as much proper maintenance as you can and then hope for the best, so to speak. I know it's odd way of saying it, but.
Big, big problem there, if you don't mind me speaking, is, you know, keeping vehicles past their.
The warranty.
Warranty.
So what, what most trucks now, five year?
Seven, is the, seven years is generally what your warranties will run.
I said five plus.
Usually seven.
Good.
That's what the state runs on, they, they, they keep their trucks on a seven year rotation, they don't mess around with it.
So when we go into CEP, I'm gonna ask you a few questions about the equipment we have and other options.
Okay.
Long tires change, as you can imagine, with some of those bigger tires, it gets very pricey. Felt comfortable though, for now, reducing that down. Apartment supplies, kept that same uniform, equipment rental, lowered that a little bit. Still doing the lot rent. Small tools, kept the number the same.
Forty-nine.
Close to the department.
Forty-nine.
Improvement plan, building improvements, putting in four thousand, overall, the building is in pretty good shape. I know Lynn had brought up some issue, Lindonie had brought issues up on the front of the building, I've looked at that, I think it's just more cosmetic. We're gonna address that. Guardrails, see, we have a healthy budget, so we're gonna put any ones in there just because of some of the budget pressures we are facing, that town is facing.
Do we have any plans on guardrails replacements in the short term?
So one of the big ones is Lover's Lane.
Yeah, but we have a grant for that.
And so that'll get instituted this year. Carl, I mean, are the.
We do have a few around town that we should probably fix. We've got one up on Union Brook that was, somebody had clobbered in a car accident. I don't know if we got an insurance claim on that or.
You what? Do not have insurance?
So that's definitely one that we definitely need to fix at some point.
So when the person who hits our rails doesn't have insurance, then do we collect insurance on our policy?
Yeah, um, sometimes we do, yeah.
Why sometimes?
Um, if it's a relatively small amount, we won't, but if it's a significant, we do.
Okay. Okay. Seeing what they did on Route twelve between here and Montpelier, they've changed the design for guardrails, are they less expensive?
Uh, I would imagine probably not, I don't know that for sure, but I highly doubt that they are.
There's a lot less metal in them.
Yeah.
But we don't know.
We don't know, um, I don't, I think their the whole reasoning behind it is because it it allows them to get the snow off the road better. It's got less surface area, so they can actually push the snow off.
Are we still buying used guardrails?
To be honest with you, I haven't bought any since I assumed this position, so I'm not really sure what we've been doing, I think.
Yeah, we tried to get, I think in the past, oh, I know in the past, we have gotten some from the state.
Right.
Yeah.
The company that does the guardrails will make them available to discount.
Yeah, the state's pretty quick to.
Roll one.
To change them over, particularly the interstate.
Yeah, I wish, I know who we is.
But move on to bridges, um, as I mentioned in my report, uh, we're anticipating an increase in the cost for the Main Street Bridge. Still have not gotten a revised estimate, been asking Gary LaRoche from the state every other month. Like Jeff, we're working on it, so, but he did indicate that the cost of that bridge is gonna go up. Two things driving that are, um, just cost, cost in general. But also, um, they did, they are seeing that they're gonna have to do a little bit more of a sophisticated, um, wall type of structure on the upside of the, um, the Gulf Station side, right in there, they have found more complicated rock structure, they're gonna have to do a bit more sophisticated design there, so that's gonna push up the cost. Again, Gary wouldn't commit to anything, but he did say, you know, it's gonna be a fairly decent increase. Fortunately, because it's been pushed out, um, another year, you know, the board will have an opportunity to to look at that again, but we toyed with a hundred thousand, but due to budget pressure, put in sixty.
So I hear you right, it's eight point five million project currently projected, of which Northfield's match is four hundred and twenty-five?
At this time, yeah.
Of which we have two seventy-six.
Yeah.
With with this sixty grand, it would be three thirty-five or whatever.
Right.
So we have a ninety thousand deficit right from there.
Yes.
And the price is gonna go up.
The balance of two seventy-six is because we have been paying bills very long. Two seventy-six is what we have left.
How much have we paid already?
I was trying to find that note, the, the hundred and twenty over two years was a little more than
Over two years.
Bringing it to four twenty-five with what we have paid, does that make any sense?
So, so, we're on a pretty good track, but we just don't know.
Yeah.
There's an unknown.
If we go sixty grand next year too.
Yeah, but it could, if it goes up, it could be a hundred next year, so it'll sting, it's stinging now or singing next year.
Yeah, I don't have the number of what we, I mean, I have it, it's not right there. Eighty-five thousand would have brought us, with what we've already spent.
Yeah.
Eighty-five thousand would have brought us to exactly four twenty-five.
Ah, okay.
So the one twenty is a little more is above that.
All right.
Thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, again, you just don't know.
Understood.
You just don't know what it's gonna be.
That's bad.
And with the Canadian exports being a twenty-five percent tariff, this is gonna help the steel.
No comment. Mr. Trudell was in Florida the other day, so.
Um, and then with the Town Iowa Bridge, we, uh, as you can see, the estimate was quite low, so we have to make up for that. Town Iowa fifty-four, um, estimated two-ten, uh, we have a hundred and ten, I'm gonna feel comfortable pushing that out for another year.
How much do you think the cost will go up when we push it out? Because then it won't be two-ten anymore, right? I mean, there already probably isn't.
Again, you know, just an estimate, but yeah.
Yeah, but I just. It just seems like prices have been doubling.
How do, how do we get the estimates?
Um, had two, two bridge companies come in, both Blom and Cody and Daniels.
Okay.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, that's why I say we have lots of problems as it relates to bridges.
If the Main Street Bridge goes up and we still need to end that Town fifty-four, I mean, we could have next year even more than what we have now, I don't know. Bridges.
Well, they gotta be addressed.
And we're still working on, weren't you working on a a bridge inventory that is, where is that in terms of progress?
So we made good progress on that, so I took the state, the state does inventories. In the past, I haven't always been so happy with some of those inventories, they've they've kind of missed the boat by.
Yeah, well, then.
So we're trying to supplement that the best as we can.
Because my guess is there's other bridges that
Oh, no, it was terrible.
Need money too.
Things that they were giving much better grades on than they probably should have, I thought, but.
Do you voice that concern to the manager, Carl?
Yes. Um, another thing I I was looking at here, uh, which I didn't think of until now, was we just put a bunch of money into a footbridge. We do have another footbridge in this town that's going to require a substantial amount of work as well on Vine Street.
Yeah. How far out do you think?
It's, I don't, I don't know when that was done, and we're talking a long, long time. That's a, that's a hundred percent wooden structure, except for the, when they took the old bridge superstructure and moved it over just because it, they didn't, because it looks nice, I guess, but the, most of it is is just wood.
Really?
Yeah, and there was last winter, was it last winter or something?
It did, it sustained some damage last year.
Yeah.
As well, it just, the decking came in, we did fix it and it's fine, but.
Would it be good to get an estimate of what it's gonna cost to replace the decking on that?
It's gonna be a little more than decking on that one.
Well, yeah, and then an estimate for everything, so that, I mean, because we're not saving hardly anything for footbridges.
I think that bridge has been under the radar for a long time.
Yeah.
This footbridge account started and has only ever been.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was gonna say.
It has never.
I think it needs its own.
Should we have two?
Yeah.
Well.
Probably should have their own individual.
Yeah, because they're off-cycle.
Nobody thinks of that bridge, you know, I mean, who really ever thinks of that bridge, right?
So, I didn't know it was all wood.
Yeah, I walk, I walk over pretty much every night, because I take my dog for a walk at night, so.
It's an important, let's walk on it, yeah, loss and loss. We, I don't know whether we should put some money in now.
We don't, well, we certainly add a line item, but we have no cost estimates, but what would you like to see in there?
Above zero.
Well, that's a good answer, dollar.
I mean, at least a thousand, a prob, I mean, it's gonna be expensive. And it's probably not gonna, I mean, we don't have a number of years that we can, but.
Well, the footbridge that has a balance on it is is done, right?
Right.
Yes.
So that means that six thousand dollars is available for the other footbridge.
In theory, that other bridge should be good for a long time.
Right, so.
That one went in in two thousand, what, five? Four, two thousand four, two thousand five?
Right, but it, but this is about the decking, you're talking about just decking and you're not talking about ironwork, you're talking.
No, I'm just, the crossmembers underneath are are wooden.
Right, four by fours.
They're what, basically just go across and let rest on the iron.
Right. So, you've got six thousand in the footbridge account, buy a fair amount of timber, what, who's gonna do the job for labor? That's another thing.
Yeah.
So you still need to add more money, footbridges are gonna be there, so to have, I think it was a thousand bucks, wasn't it, at one time? So I would continue the thousand dollars and, uh, in perpetu, because you're gonna have to do work on the footbridges.
Yeah, but have two lines, have each footbridge have its own line.
I, I, I don't.
You don't.
I don't, I really don't care, a footbridge is a footbridge, you're gonna be, uh, you got two footbridges, you can.
Right, but we just use all, I mean, they're gonna be off-cycle, so if we only have one and then you use all the funds in it for the one, then you have none for the other.
I'd like to see us add a line item, shift five thousand from the old footbridge to this new line item and add a thousand dollars into the budget for that new line item. So you'd have six thousand and still have a thousand in the old bridge in case of any incidents.
Didn't there used to be money for Safe Routes to School?
Yeah, there's still some Safe Routes to School program. Lori was gonna ask, were you gonna ask about the sidewalk project?
How far down does that sidewalk project go compared to where the footbridge is?
It goes to the bridge, which I'm now like, oh, why didn't we think about putting the bridge in there too? You find it the safe route. Well, partially because we thought that it was half a million just for the sidewalks, but then we found out it was gonna be less, so we might have been, we were probably feeling like, whoa, that's already so much.
It's all water over the damn now.
It is, but it's also, there are still funds that will be available.
Refresh my memory.
In the resolution, the surplus that's going to be available.
So.
There's some.
Yep.
There's, and there's the interest, which we haven't.
Yep, well, I thought we remarked that for a certain amount.
We talked about, yeah, putting that in economic development, but we haven't yet, but there's still.
So you're saying, so what's the thought, is combine that to the project we're doing with the sidewalk?
I don't know, I don't know how, I mean, we should, we should investigate how bad the bridge condition is.
We'll get somebody to do an assessment.
And get some estimates.
We'll get an assessment.
This may be an opportunity then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, you see, you can tell, like, you know, you look at the lumber on it, it's it's starting to swell, it's.
So I'll get the folks from Daniels, they do it.
Thanks for bringing that to the attention.
Yeah.
What I'm here for.
Yep.
Have a question on the footbridge. With the new decking, can the sidewalk plow go on it now? This deck bridge now is considerably stronger than it ever was.
So we, we did get an opinion from Daniels, the person we deal with, who's an engineer, and he said he's absolutely very comfortable with that, could I ask?
Okay. The, what they did different was, the previous one, it only had one, one set of decking on the top. It was just linear two-by-fours that were not laterally tacked in any way, shape, or, each one was an independent running across each span. Those have now been laterally tacked and that, and on top of that, there's another, another two inches of of decking on top of that which also helps disperse the weight.
So is that a wear coat, the top two inches?
Excuse me?
Is that a wear coat, the top two inches?
No, it's just, it's just pressure treated, but it definitely is dispersing the weight out much more, so much more comfortable with it.
Just splintering further integrity. That's good. And we've been running a machine on it?
Yeah.
Good.
And Elroy won't have to.
I was just thinking about Elroy.
Yes, um, so as we've talked about, so with the Vine Street sidewalk, so with the next round of budgets, we're gonna have to add into the budget that project cost and the revenues from the transfer.
We just, progress, I mean.
Uh, because, uh, we down, um, as we talked about Union Brook, we had a number of issues along that road, uh, so we did use funds for that.
Oh, you're doing it, let's go to retaining walls.
Oh, did I miss, I I greatly, seriously, I was not, I apologize.
So we, we identified retaining walls as one of our major goals to address. Where are we at with the one on School Pearl?
Pearl and School, yeah.
So I've had an engineer, I have an engineer working on that, um, we have a proposal, they're coming back with a plan, so I gotta check and see where he's at with that.
No cost estimate yet?
No. Um, again, I, we had them look at it from two perspectives, whether the base could be reestablished whether it was more cosmetic or the entire.
What's the timeline on getting that information back, because we started talking about that back in the spring?
Yeah, so I'll check.
Before a bunch of season ends?
I'll, I'll check with the.
And then what other two, I think we have three important retaining wall issues.
Elm Street.
Elm Street is the big one, that no one wants to address.
Uh, there's also another one on Water Street.
We talked about that one. So we, we struggled with how much to put in there, um, you know, we steadily have been putting I don't know, was it ten to twenty, did we ever get up to twenty? But, as you can see, uh, put in ten thousand with the, as aside with the first budget go around, I did put like twenty-five, but then it was sticker shock, so, um, felt like a more manageable number was ten. As we talked about, the Elm Street one's going to be a very expensive project, uh, you know, remember, we got a cost estimate in a number of years, seven, eight years ago, it was, it was pushed five hundred thousand, I think.
About that.
Yeah, it was a fairly complicated one, considering its location, plus you've got utilities in there.
Is that a bondable project or not?
A particular one or?
Like, like Elm Street being five hundred thousand.
I don't see why it wouldn't be, it's highway improvement.
What would be, what would, what would not be a bondable project? Well, I guess I should have been clear on my question, is there a threshold of dollars spent that we bond versus fund through CEP?
I don't think so.
Or CIP?
I think, I think, I think we've got bonds out there for a quarter million.
For what?
A quarter million, the DTA.
Right, but that was more than that, at the beginning.
All right.
No, I just didn't know if there's a certain amount we bond for, if it's a half a million dollar project or above to bond for it versus.
So, a bond, bond versus no, if, um, if you're gonna go over five years, it has to be a bond and it has to go through Australian ballot.
So there you go.
You can take a no for less.
Got it.
But then whether, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while since we discussed that. So bonding is over five years, thank you.
Yep. Now move down to paving, um, typically we've been putting in anywhere from two hundred, two hundred twenty-five thousand, um, there is a balance. Is that the final number of the forty-three, or do we have on the paving, or is there something else to come out, I don't remember? Anyway, when we looked at that, with the balance, with a balance, then one ninety, it'll get us close to the two twenty-five.
And the two twenty-five is going to be sufficient to do the projects we wanna do?
Correct.
Carl, what are we gonna do? For paving next year, what would you like to see?
Well, I'd really like to look around and make, you know, see what's changed and then discuss it.
Well, I'd really like to look around and make, you know, see what's changed and then discuss it with the manager.
Just bring us some time to look at paving.
This is not it.
Yeah, but that's, I feel pretty solid, that's a good number, two hundred thirty thousand.
We're at thirty-seven five at the end of November, thirty-seven five.
Thirty-seven five is the balance.
And gravel resurfacing, uh, put in ninety as we have. So as we talked about.
We're gonna do two next year?
Yeah, well, no, well, calendar year, but not budget year, right?
Yeah, that's good, that's all I wanted to hear.
Yep, so Turkey Hill, and then the other, some smaller roads, I think we're talking Bean Road. Bean Road is definitely, hasn't had any attention to it.
So, and, and that needs it.
In the spring, Turkey Hill, and then. Turkey Hill's gonna eat a good, Turkey Hill's gonna eat a good amount of it. And then, uh, once we jump into the next budget year, Bean, we talked, I care rooms, a couple of others, but.
You got paper showing on the old, you got road fabric showing on the old.
Yeah. Yeah, I covered that up this fall, yeah. I'm up about six loads right there, just trying to get it by.
That's another, that's Owensboro and Kingston Field.
Yeah, it is, right.
It's a ten foot high ground.
And that right there is a good example of compaction issues and not, not being able to keep it on, on those hills.
Right. Where we going next?
Uh, page sixty-one. The equipment, trucks, loader. Now we're getting into the meat and potatoes.
Carl, are you excited?
No, I'm not excited. So as you, you can see, this is a, some big ticket items in there, um, based on the capital budget, uh, probably keep the number close to what we have. See the vehicles that, uh, looking to replace.
We changed some life on some vehicles when Julie was still here, do you remember which ones? We changed that year.
And then we reversed it.
Did we?
Yes.
We did, um, I think Matt Gabois, when he was on the select board, um, lobbying to extend it out one or two years, am I correct?
Three, yeah.
Three?
Yeah.
And then we retracted them, I believe.
Yeah, your vehicle maintenance costs.
So Carl, question. The big trucks that we buy, the Western Star.
Yes.
What other options do we have to replace those?
MAC.
MAC?
Not international.
Not international?
Definitely not.
Why?
Well, I can give you several reasons.
I would like to hear them.
Uh, the first thing is that they're too light duty, um, they weren't good for the state, but you see what they do with them, they pretty much keep them on pavement. Frames, the frames on them are not, not rigid enough to do what we're doing. Uh, you start running those trucks through ruts and mud and, and with the dump bodies up in the air, they're not gonna take it.
At the turn of the century, I called the manager in Randolph and asked, because he was using internationals on his roads, and he wished he had MACs.
Yeah.
Got it.
MAC, MAC ideally is ultimately what I would like to go with, but they're expensive. I mean, they're, they're, they're running almost fifty thousand dollars more than a Western Star. Did you get that much more? You do on the service side of it for sure, unfortunately, MAC isn't what it used to be anymore. They're all, they're pretty much Volvo's for the most part.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, they're running Volvo power plant in and out, MACs aren't like the MAC I, that we still have. That, we'll never see a truck like that ever again, those are gone. Yeah, some electrical issues I've heard. Oh, yeah, uh, I can, I, like, I go to the equipment shows, I, I talk to a lot of road, other road foremen. Uh, I know a lot of guys that are, are running them. Berlin's running internationals right now, and they're getting out of them.
Okay.
They're, they're going to Western Stars, their, their next truck coming in is a Western Star.
Really?
Yeah, so.
Well, there goes that theory, yeah, but we're dumb.
No, I mean, they definitely, their pricing's good, but, uh, you're, you, you know, you look at what you're getting, I'd hate to see.
Of course, I didn't think about, they go through a lot, ours goes through a lot more than the state of Vermont's.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we, we're, I mean, those trucks take a beating, and that's just unfortunate.
Maybe throw a wing on it during mud season.
Go ahead.
You won't have a truck left.
So I'm gonna just throw this out here, um, 'cause I promised Elroy I'd ask the question. And I'm not saying, do we have anything in our fleet that we can buy used with?
Just be buying somebody else's problems. I mean, they're getting rid of it for a reason.
Yeah.
You know, and that usually means the warranty is out, I mean, most of the used stuff, like the state auctions, those are all out of warranty, that's why they're getting rid of them.
Alright.
So.
So it's very important to us to have a vehicle that has warranty.
Absolutely.
And not to keep it too much past that.
If we could get, that's, I think that's, you know, our maintenance costs are gonna be high until we get back on track. We're, we're so far out now, it's not.
And right now, if the warranty lasts.
Seven years.
Seven years.
That's the standard.
Can we, you know, I believe Carl, there's conflict.
Yeah. Uh, from what I'm getting from Sandy, Sandy from. I'm good. That's what he's telling me is. Alright, I'm grateful to hear.
On the large trucks, right, is it a small?
Not, yeah, I think the smaller.
Like a string pickup, I think, is five.
Yeah.
Yeah, the smaller trucks.
Yeah, the smaller trucks, but the, the, the big trucks are seven years.
Western Stars.
I think that's where.
Okay, no, thanks, yeah, no, I'm pleasantly surprised.
I'm just, don't go by the way, but I'm thinking like three quarters of time, half tons.
Right, now, aren't we?
The dumps are seven, I think.
Pretty much, yeah, one side will slip a little bit, but yeah, we.
So we're now, we're, we're now back to seven years, I guess, on our cycles.
We're gonna try, for sure. At least, we've got some old trucks.
Are we on, wait, eight?
You got a dump truck fourteen, Western tandem.
Yep.
I, I presume that's.
That's going this year, right?
Yes. Yes. Uh, the MAC's twenty years old.
It can go another twenty.
But that has a new body, right? Yeah, the body on it is, well, it's, that's over ten years old now too, the body.
So the fourteen we're gonna replace this year?
Yeah.
And so that was probably when we extended it three more years than we did in Hedges, is that the reason?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would love to be able to sit down sometime and figure out, you know, how much money we've had to put in that truck in the past two years. It's pretty sketchy.
It's in the warrant all the time.
Yeah, well, that would be an interesting thing to do as an exercise, justify the cost right there.
Exactly.
Yeah, we should do that.
Did you hear that, Laurie?
Yeah.
Selective hearing.
The costs of these trucks is just astronomical.
The fourteen.
Crazy.
You wanna go out there with a pick and a shovel?
Nope, do not.
So we gotta have.
We're looking at, uh, two hundred and ninety thousand on average for a ten wheeler now.
Yep, we just talked to Pete about this the other night, million dollars for a bumper.
That's with a body and plow and wagon. And then just to get seven, eight years? Yeah, I mean, look at what we're, what the, uh, the, the one tons are going for, the fifty-five hundreds. I mean, those are a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. That's the world we're living in.
Well, I'll have to deliver the bad news to Elroy.
So that's kind of the trucks, we start talking about excavator, loaders, um, where are things at? Well, yes, the loader, as you know, we just put a ton of money into that, and then, you know, it's, it's right there, you know, the warranty's out. You start, you start having a lot of the issues, you know, and then, then the rust starts becoming an issue as well. So. We, uh, let's see, when is that due, the Volvo, uh?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight? Are we gonna make it there?
It'll make it there, we, we can make it there, you know.
Just the cost of repairs.
Continue paying the repair bills. Yeah.
It's not a big deal, come on.
Well, unfortunately, yes.
I don't see the repair bills, I got them. So right now, we have a lifespan on a loader of fifteen years, is that realistic?
I think it's realistic, I mean, definitely.
And ours?
I wouldn't question it any more than that.
We bought our, that twelve in two thousand twelve, obviously, so that's lasted twelve years.
It's, it's, it's a good loader, it's.
But we just had a forty thousand dollar bill, right? How much was it?
Uh, actually, it was a little over, a fourteen, yeah.
Oh, was that?
We, uh, well, we opted out, they, there was a valve body they wanted to replace, which was gonna double the cost. And I, after talking with them, we decided that we were gonna try to rebuild the valve body. And that's what we did, it was considerably cheaper, it still leaks, but it's nowhere near as bad as it was. We put all new O-rings and, and new pistons and so on that are in there. So, it's, the EGR was expensive. That was introducing coolant, or excuse me, it was introducing exhaust into the coolant area, which was pressurizing the coolant area and was not allowing it to maintain coolant. Kinda had to fix that. Escavator, and, let's see here on that, the replacement, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight as well?
How many hours on it?
That has six thousand and change. And that is getting to the point now where we're going to need to think about replacing tracks. Uh, it's approximately six thousand aside, and that's if we do the work ourselves. That's taking the pads off, replacing the chain, you know.
That was one of the better investments that we made.
That, that excavator? Yeah. Graders or? Yeah, we're in good shape there, obviously.
You better say that.
You know, and having that second one is, is, I mean, I know some people don't like that. But in the spring, when things get out of hand, and I can pile somebody else in the other one, and we can split up, and we can get things done, and it's worth it, it's, we put a ton of money into that, it'd be sad to let it go. Sidewalk machine, that's new? That's new, that's in very nice shape still, low hours.
Leaf collection system is excellent?
Excellent. Yeah.
I watch the guys, and it's really good now.
Yeah, it's a nice piece of equipment, better be.
Yeah.
Traffic light, um, Jeff, are you still trying to get ahold of the update people?
So, we, we've done half of the work a year and a half ago, and then they needed to come back and get, do more work. But what they had done was key to keeping it in good shape, but yeah, there's still more work to do.
Which we have funding for, yeah.
So are they gonna replace the cameras and all that as well? Yeah. Cause that seems to be where the issues are now. Yeah.
We have funds there to do it.
Yeah, it's just been difficult to get the people to come, right?
And I'm surprised, it used to be pretty good, I don't know if it's changed.
Alternatives, or it just?
Well, fortunately, Vermont, I think there's only one outfit that works on those, but.
Yeah, this is Vermont, well, we have one traffic light, so, I love in our, traffic light, singular.
Yeah, it's, I know, it's in our friendship light.
Alright, do you have, uh, maintenance schedules for all your equipment?
Yes.
That was a question from the audience.
Yeah, most, most, most everything gets either five, it's either five hundred hours on, on all services, or one year, whichever comes up first. So you're happy with the vehicle lift system? Yes, that's, yeah, it's pretty handy, it's pretty versatile. It's a much better system than what we purchased there in the first.
Yeah.
That's kind of it.
Pretty good. Thank you, Carl, and, uh, my compliments to everyone on your staff, I think the roads and sidewalks, the last few storms have been attended to very well.
Best we can.
And, um, I can back that up with my phone not blowing up.
Yep, yeah, we've been, uh, we've been getting out early enough to get things done, trying to, you know, make sure the buses can get around safely and.
You know, I think people have an expectation level that, you know, everything's gonna be done within an hour of daybreak, and that's not practical.
No.
It's unreasonable.
I mean, it's.
I forgot what Chuck used to say, the number of hours it takes us just to do all the loads once?
Six, about six hours.
Yeah, and then the sidewalks.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I mean, as you probably know, we're, we're shorthanded as well, so. We've been fortunate to have the water department, and, you know, I've been calling those guys in, and they've been helping us out, so.
Good. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Hey, uh, we'll be.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yep, we're gonna do that, um, we're gonna do public participation on schedule, Mr. Manager. Is there anyone that would like to?
How about online?
I'd sort of look that way. Okay, um, no need to go on executive tonight.
Such a disappointment.
So I'd look for a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Carl. Move to executive for the discussion, hearing that, all those in favor of a German say aye.
Aye.
Close, standing five zeros, thank you, and we'll see everyone here next Tuesday at six P M. And what is the subject, Mr. Manager?
So there's just a few, like, zoning department, I'll just go through, so, so, we'll have a list though.
Well, the, the simple answer is.
Yeah, so, uh, economic zoning.
Since two thousand, since nineteen ninety-seven.
Or not record, but, but then.
That's why you're done.
That's one of the.
Where we, uh, some of the, they have like gambling access. Hopefully, Megan will have that.
Okay, next two. You have some that are good that are unavailable? You have others that are great that are unavailable, you have fifteen picture models. The small farmer is.
Yeah, okay, big note there.